I'd like to say something.
Okay. Hi, I'm Marilyn Richards. I am first generation, German descent. My folks came from Germany quite a while ago, but not as refugees, but certainly as immigrants. They settled in Brooklyn, New York, and I am certain that without the support of community services even at that time, that transition into a strange country would have been far more difficult. My question would be, in my history of being involved with refugees that have settled into communities, and this goes back to when I was a child growing up in New Jersey, we had refugee programs. Most of those programs were through the church, the clergy. There were support system in place, you know, they found them a place to live. Now, my assumption is that if we became a welcoming community, that you folks would have the groundwork in place. How long does that support last? And what would you expect from our community to pick up the slack when you move on to another needy family who's coming to East Long Meadow or Springfield or any other neighboring community?
Well, thank you, that's a great question, and so I'm very happy to answer it. So, we do all the heavy lifting. So, when a family arrives, well, before a family arrives, we already take the responsibility to find housing, to set up their home, and to make sure that they have everything that they need from the very first hour that they arrive. And then, we hold them very tight for the first three months, very, very tightly. We provide every bit of organization that they need. We take them to get their kids enrolled in schools. We help them with employment services. We help them get into English classes as we move them. And then, the three months end, and that's where heavier lifting comes into place by JFS. So, this is where we have all of our wraparound services. We have programs to work in the schools. We have programs for mental health services in the event that there's, for example, a child that's having a difficult time. We are able to provide in-home therapy for the family and the child with a therapist that speaks their language and understands their culture. And this can go on and on and on, and we have had people come back and return to us for services up to five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years. They are always, they're always part of our family, the people that we work with, and we are invested in them doing well. So, we don't want to let people flounder. So, what do we need from the community? To be friendly, to be welcoming. If you want to get involved, get involved. If you would like to tutor a child or do homework help, fantastic, but you don't have to. Basically, we just ask that you would be a welcoming community. And the reality of it is, in East Long Meadow, and I think Dan Clark, one of our board members, said, is that I don't know that we would be resettling that many people in East Long Meadow. That's the reality. But, more importantly, we are trying to establish a welcoming county, a county where people can go and they can travel into East Long Meadow and they can do things and not be worried that they wouldn't be accepted or liked. And I'm not saying that that's a universal thing by any means, everybody has their own feelings, but as a community, just to know that East Long Meadow, they also said that they would be welcoming, that's the most important thing, and that's what we really ask of our communities. We would do the lifting, let's say that we have three children in school, and one of them was having issues. We work with the school so that we are in touch with the school, so the school would go to call us, and we're right on top of it. And that is just the way that we do our work. So, I don't know.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Good. So, Ms. Stein, is it fair to say then that were you to resettle a family into an available housing here in town, there really is no financial obligation or burden on the municipality?
That's absolutely, 100% correct.
Because I do think that tends to be the presumption of folks that may not be well read on the topic.
Exactly right. I think that so often, people are so fearful and so worried that a newcomer will take away services from current citizens and current people in the community, and that is simply not the case. For example, the employers that all call us, they can't get the people to take the jobs because people don't want those jobs. But, our clients so want to make it, they are so willing to do whatever it takes. And I think of one person in particular that is just a lovely, lovely gentleman. He's a young father of a baby and I think one or two other children. He's going to, he's working full-time, and he's going to school full-time to become a social worker. And I said, "How do you do that? How do you do that?" And he said, "What do you mean, how do I do that? This is what I'm going to do, this is how I'm going to get ahead." And I think that's what you're going to find if you do have the fortune, frankly, of having anybody in the community. These are not only resilient people, but they're beautiful in just their determination and their will, and I frankly think that they're beautiful role models for people, and they're inspirational. It's really inspirational.
So, back in November, I think on the 26th, Jeanne, did this come up on our second November meeting?
Yes.
I believe the matter, without the benefit of your being able to be present to give backup, did come before the council, and we, as a council, voted to not take any action on it, to not give direction to then our interim manager, but now our, you know, now she's our permanent manager. Having said that, as a council, we're in a little bit of a catch-22, to be fair, in that we have council rules that say that any measure that comes before the council that is voted down cannot come back before the council for a vote until six months has lapsed. So, that coupled with, two of our members have been strucken, like all of Western Mass with the flu. We don't have a full complement tonight. What I would like to suggest to my council colleagues is, we reexamine our council rules and speak with our manager and our legal counsel to see if there is some latitude there that does not necessarily force us to wait four more months to address this matter. So...
My question too is, I wasn't at that meeting.
You were. That's correct. So, by unanimous, I should say you were absent that evening. It was six of the seven present to vote.
But, my question is, you voted to take no action?
Correct.
Is that, and that would have to be looked at, does that meet the criteria for denial?
Of St. Helen. And so, this is what I want to pursue, because I would like to...
Through the chair, do you want me to read the motion?
Please.
Okay. Councilor Anderson made the following motion. At this date and time identified as 11/26/2019 at 7:35 PM, not to authorize acting town manager Mary McNally to give written consent for continued refugee resettlement in East Long Meadow as required under the executive order of 13888, etc., enhancing state and local involvement in refugee resettlement.
Okay, so, that sounds as though not to authorize, which means the manager's taking no action on it to respond. Regardless, I...
Do you have any questions?
Certainly.
Am I understanding that you're constraining a no-action vote as meaning the same as a no vote under the council?
That's what I would like, the benefit of time now, to discuss with our council and our manager. And so, that I would recommend at the present that we just...
Table it.
Or take it under advisement so that we can, with this much more full backup information, as well as the comments from our residents, address this matter again.
That's great. Do you have a sense of, we're all on timelines, of course, and we're dealing with the State Department timeline. Do you have a sense about when you may resolve this one way or the other?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I thought that timeline already went by. When the letter was submitted, we were given a certain date.
Yeah. It did not go by. No, it's now, we're now into January, and it's now been extended to January 21. And the reality of it is, even after January 21, we are being encouraged just to keep going because there is no end date to being able to submit a letter consenting.
So, if there's no end date, there's really no timeline. If it takes us a month to do it, or a month and a half, I mean, those are your words, there's really no end timeline.
We are being, the State Department will let us to get it in by January 21, of course, and so I guess what I'm saying is, is that it seems like that's going to be a very difficult deadline for you all to meet.
Well, we don't meet again till the 28th, two weeks, every two weeks.
Right, so certainly that would be totally fine.
I would think, certainly in taking it under advisement, it would not be my goal as chair to push it off for four months and just, by default, we're at six months. I would like to get questions answered as quickly as possible and talk with our clerk to see how full the 28th agenda is.
It's getting there.
We always think, oh, we're wide open, and then in the blink of an eye, much comes on. But, would it be fair to say, Jeanne, that the 28th or the 11th of February, we could manage this?
Certainly by the 11th.
Okay.
That would be great. And so, just for my clarification, and then I'll walk away from this table, but for my clarification to understand, so that in the event that you would not be able to act on it at the February 11 meeting...
We would let you know, as soon as we know where it's placed. I'll work with...
But, my question was, you mentioned a six-month pause between one to another, so does that mean that in six months, you would be able to take...
Correct. If that is, that rule, we're bound by, if we're bound by that. And we're almost two months into that six-month period, but still, we're looking at...
It would be great to get it in.
Right. And I'm sensitive to that.
Thank you.
In either way, as soon as we know which agenda, we will reach out to you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
And we do have to vote to table it or take it under advisement.
Through the chair, one more question, Ms. Stein.
Sure.
Assuming that the powers that be indicate that we can't take this up for another six months, within the confines of your programs and your folks who are willing, the fact that East Long Meadow has not made a commitment with respect to this particular issue, if there were an entity that was able to welcome a family, they could still come to East Long Meadow, is that correct? I mean, are we...
They can move to East Long Meadow, we, the State Department would not allow us to help them, to work with them. If you do not, of course, they can come, they can come, they can go wherever they want, they can move to the state of Texas if they want to.
I hear what you're saying, I just didn't know...
Yeah, that, our hands are tied, believe me. We would love to do everything, and our hands are tied. After three months, they can start coming and accessing other programs with us, for sure. But, in that initial three-month resettlement period, we would not be able to help them get an apartment, to be able to, you know, get them to learn the lay of the land of America.
So, if that particular situation were handled by the East Long Meadow clergy, rather than perhaps, you know, the Jewish family services?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's somewhat tricky because, you see, refugee, I mean, they could certainly be helpful. Refugee resettlement agencies and the families are given a pot of money to do the resettlement work, and so the clergy wouldn't have access to that.
It's all clear now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So, I like to stand the motion to take this matter under advisement with the potential for it to appear at our next earliest available meeting.
So, move.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this tabling passes unanimously, and again, to our residents who took the time to speak from your heart, thank you for doing that, and come visit anytime. We like having people in the audience. Sometimes, we're lonely here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back under, moving back into our normal flow to item number four, council comments. Are there any council comments this evening? Mr. Henry?
Through the chair, I'd just like to react to a comment I think we all heard from one of our applicants for town manager. He toured the town hall, and he was surprised to see the closed doors.
Yes.
And he noticed a sign upstairs that said, "We're out to lunch," and he took offense. He said, "In our town, we don't do that." And it reminds me, I went to Texas, and they said, "Here's the people's house." Of course, the Texas State House is bigger than the one in Washington. And they said, "You may go anywhere here, you don't need us to be with you, just take off. Any door that's open, you walk right in. If the door opens up, you walk right in, you say hi." So, because this is the people's house. And I thought, man, that's nice. I know Mary feels that way, I just wanted to bring that up as a, in the council comments, that I certainly feel that we could be more welcoming, but I understand that it's hard to move some situations rapidly.
I will echo that, that I brought that up to Ms. McNally shortly after the process was finished, echoing that same observation from an applicant that, in most cases, office doors were closed. I know sometimes it's for the matter of, especially in the winter, heat, or conversely, the air conditioning, but the matter of closed, you know, for lunch, come back whenever, I think we can do a better job on that with, not everyone in the office needs to be lunching at the same time, and perhaps that can be addressed in some amicable fashion.
I can address it right now, if you'd like.
Okay.
Because I inquired with regard to those comments that were made, and that happened to be December 18th. And the reason that particular office was closed for lunch is that the office was having its Christmas party, so it was an exceptional circumstance that occurred on that day, because when I inquired of the department head, hey, you know, you have enough staff to keep your office open and don't send people away, he said, "That's what happened. Everybody wanted to be together that day." So, it was a one-off. And with respect to the closed doors, our hallways in town hall, in case you haven't noticed, mostly when you come in, you have an overcoat on, are very cold. The offices themselves are fairly warm and comfortable, but the hallways are quite cold. And so, many of the office doors that might otherwise be open and welcoming to anybody coming up and down the hall, that's for preservation of climate control, if you will, in the respective offices. So, we're very mindful, and I'm glad you know that I know. But, yeah, so that's something that, I mean, we're happy to have the commentary come back, and we do look into everything that you've mentioned, and that's the explanation for those comments that the candidate made that particular day.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Okay, moving to the town manager's report. Keep on talking.
Well, we're off to a busy start this year. I realize now that we haven't met in over, or just about a month for business, and we've been quite busy. The town departments have all submitted their operational budgets. I had accelerated the schedule for that submission this year. I wanted everybody to have their department budgets ready for my review by December 31st, and with a couple of exceptions, that was the case, exceptions that I granted to the DPW, to the school department, and to the health department, because those three departments have boards that meet in January, and they weren't meeting in a timely way so that the department could give me their operational budgets. So, we started those reviews of the remaining 14, and we're accomplishing 12 reviews this week. We did five yesterday, four today, one tomorrow, two on Thursday, and we'll probably do two more on Friday. So, by the end of this week, we'll have the initial review of all the, yes, that's all, of the operational budgets for all departments. Then, after that, we'll start with the capital budget issues. We have, we did not have a department heads meeting in December because it was scheduled for December 18th, which was your date to interview the candidates, it was also the date of the now infamous Christmas party in the DPW. But, we will have one tomorrow, and it's going to give me the opportunity to give my sort of state-of-the-town address and let the department heads know, as if they didn't already, what my particular expectations are about their professional conduct and the conduct between departments, communication and cooperation, by and among all employees regardless of their status. In the course of these budget conversations that we've had, several departments have brought their administrative assistance with them, in part, I think, just so that they have their boots on the ground in terms of the budget preparation, but I think more importantly, to express some concerns about the recent ADP rollout that caused a number of issues for many departments, and they just wanted to have some feedback from me and from our finance director on how those issues were being addressed. But, I made the point to all of those people with whom I spoke that the concerns that were expressed will be dealt with, there will be time set aside by the finance office to spend with each department in person, and do other trainings, and do whatever we have to do to make sure that everyone is satisfied, that they understand the process, and there's no question that's too insignificant from my point of view to be dealt with, and to be dealt with promptly. Our HR director will also help me tomorrow after the meeting, if not during it, to sort of assess what our culture is. I don't want to use, you know, buzzwords that don't really mean anything to anybody, but I want to get a better sense, now that I'm in a permanent position, to take the temperature, if you will, of the department heads and our community's culture, at least inside the walls of the town hall. So, that's a very large and important priority of mine. We're also starting simultaneously with these budget conversations. Union negotiations have begun, my report says with two, but the third one popped up today, the TEU union representative has asked for some dates. So, we'll have, those conversations will be ongoing. All of the labor contracts expire June 30th, so it's kind of a perfect storm of activity this early spring. The ADP project, as I mentioned, was rolled out with the December 22nd payroll, which was paid on January 8th, and it caused a bit of consternation. I don't want to, I don't want to overkill or beat it to death, but we're paying great and close attention to that. It's a huge investment for the town. I'm told that perhaps the platform that we bought has some systemic inadequacies in its ability or inability to mark certain anniversary dates, that therefore, there has to still be a manual entry, and some people are objecting to that because it makes them think that they're effectively doing an electronic time cart, and that's a union grievable offense. And then, there's also the suggestion that, once this is implemented and rolling well, that it may reduce the tasks of some administrative staff and query whether that necessitates changes in their job descriptions. It goes on and on, and, but those are all important questions, and we'll deal with them one by one. We do continue to progress in our HR department. Last week, there was a FMLA training and a Cobra training conducted by the Employers' Association of the Northeast with whom we've engaged. There's also an ACA component of that training, and we had an unemployment training because my assistant is going to take over some of that, some of those administrative tasks from the finance office. We've also begun a review of the vacancies on all the town boards and commissions. I did appoint Aaron Lynch to the Conservation Commission in early January, and I intend to continue to conduct interviews with other interested parties regarding vacancies on various boards and commissions. Some boards, all seats have expired, and the people are serving in holdover capacity, so we just want to neaten that up and solicit the interest of the community members compliant with the charter, which requires advertising in a newspaper, and we'll also put it on the website and whatnot. There was a bit of a glitch on a recent interviewee with respect to whether or not the charter, I think, has conflicting provisions about my ability to just appoint in one section, that's what it says, and then in another section, certain appointments are subject to rejection, I guess, for lack of a better word, by the council. So, that particular appointment, I'm just holding off until we get some clarification amongst ourselves as to which provision the charter controls, and if they're contradictory at all, I think that they are. The good news is, the health department has recently received a $50,000 annualized grant from the Mass Department of Public Health, payable out in those increments over five years. It's like the second largest award granted to a municipality. We applied for almost $80,000, it was a $400,000 pool over the five-year period, and they were awarded 50. But, it's to promote the shared services agreement that we're working on with the town of Long Meadow. And on Friday, Amy Petruski and I met with a representative of the DE, Department of Public Health, Pioneer Valley Planning, and three members of this organization called HRIA, Human, I'm sorry, Health Resources in Action. They were a consult, they are a consulting firm from Boston, which was awarded the contract to do an assessment in both communities, to get a work plan together. And this is all on top of a community compact grant that was granted a couple of years ago to the health department to initialize this operation. So, my comment about the grants is that it's, in my opinion, it's evidence of the Commonwealth's desire to have rural communities maximize the opportunity to work together. Last week alone, we had three meetings with the town of Long Meadow, town manager, DPW, and their health coordinator on this health services agreement, on our waste contracts, and on the potential to go to Civil Dispatch and Westcom in Chicopee, which is where Long Meadow has recently signed on. In that regard, our police and fire chief met with, we were invited to the Westcom ribbon cutting, which occurred on December 20th, that's the dispatch center name, official name in Chicopee, after which, we took a tour of the center, and then after that, we went and spoke with Commissioner Calvi in Springfield, because Springfield is also starting a merger of their police and fire services for dispatch, and they're looking for partners. So, there's a lot of conversation going on between our communities, us in Long Meadow, us in Hamden, us in Springfield, us in Chicopee, and we're just trying to vet whichever opportunity is the most fiscally prudent decision that we can make for our own emergency services. There's a lot of work that remains to be done on that. But, in that regard, for example, the fire department gave me a report the other day, they answered 3,600 calls, EMS calls, in 2019, 78% of which were emergency medical services. So, that second ambulance can't come soon enough. Incidentally, building is still looking for an inspector, they are interviewing candidates for their newly created admin position. Police Department honored Scott Scala with a little pizza and cake party a few weeks back, he retired after 26 years. IT reports things are going smoothly, they had a few defects with some of the Chromebooks that have been distributed throughout the school system or up to grade six, and they've all been covered, they're very pleased with that. Our relocation of the town offices is scheduled for February 4th, everyone's very excited about that. No, there's been a great level of cooperation. I think at first blush, it was like, oh geez, not again, but I think everybody's kind of come around and they've made accommodations by and between themselves, and DPW has been more than helpful coordinating the physical aspects of the move. And I did put out a sort of a quasi-request for proposals for legal services going forward to the next year or so, and I did get several offices responding to that. I haven't had an opportunity really to vet the submissions yet, but I'll do that in the next few days. And last but not... And last but not least, our free cash was certified by the Department of Revenue on January 2nd in the amount of $1,688,773. Amy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, one of our town applicants for Town Manager indicated that maybe this amount was low, and we had never thought about this amount as being low. Right?
The 1.6 million? It's probably a hair lower than the previous year, but it's not inordinate, I don't recall that it's inordinately low.
He indicated that we should have a plan.
To increase it.
Increase it, and like, that's, if you've been doing that, in fact, I believe we did that this year, adding a large amount, $300,000 to it.
That's only the general fund free cash, that 1.6. There are enterprise, water, sewer, and health.
Stabilization.
Okay, so one's unsure.
Right. Our Director of Finance is in the audience. Sarah, you want to clarify, or?
Sure.
Did you hear the question? I just reported about the free cash and the general fund anyway.
So my understanding that the applicant was asking about our reserves and the percentage of the reserves based on our overall for the town, and the concern at that being a little bit low in the 9% range. So our plan, though, if you recall, has been to contribute to our OPEB trust, to be growing that. So that is why that we kept our reserve at the 9%, which is still healthy and within the normal range as to where you would expect.
That's what I thought.
But our plan has been that any extra in our free cash and whatnot that we've been putting into OPEB, because we are building for future liabilities, and that's why we've been keeping it there. The 1.7 million is not terribly low. Last year, we had it at just over 2 million, but that was because the year before, we had left a lot in free cash that we hadn't moved into OPEB that year. So that's why it was a little bit higher than usual. But typically, we're right around the 1,001.2, right around there. And you wouldn't want to have a huge amount of free cash, because that also means that then you're not necessarily budgeting appropriately and doing all of what you should be in a prudent financial sense. Does that make sense to everybody?
It does, it does.
Thank you.
Sarah, what does the state recommend for our reserves? There is a percentage, I thought you had said like 5 to 10% or something.
It used to be around 5 to 10, and then they changed it, and it's more between 9 to 11. Now, when you're looking at our reserves, we're at 9% when you don't count our OPEB trust. But when you count our OPEB trust, we are more in the 11%. So depending on how you're looking at it, when you look at it from, say, the bond rating agencies, they do consider our OPEB trust as part of our reserves when they are considering our financial health. And that's why last fall, in September, the rating agencies actually commended us on our financial plan and how we've been doing on that OPEB trust, and how it's quite the accomplishment that in less than five years, we've gone from zero to $8 million in an OPEB trust. That's a huge deal.
I remembered the 5 to 10%, and I thought 9 was very good. To hear that, oh, you should be putting more, it was like, what? Wait a minute.
So it's probably because that individual didn't know that we had that kind of a plan, but that's why. So I think that we are still financially doing the right things.
And I remember the kudos you got for your control of the town, so thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With regards to that, through the chair?
Yes.
Mary, as far as the Health Department with Long Meadow, I know you talked a little bit about that, I know Amy had brought in a presentation earlier. I'm assuming that whatever we do, if we join with another town under the charter, that's going to be considered a reorganization plan, so that we will get a synopsis of what you're looking at and finances. I know she brought in some paperwork before, but there was no figures to it. There was no, I'm assuming that if we're joining with another community, our community's going to be saving money?
We are, and on the very rough first budget I saw from Amy the other day, we were going to net savings of like $54,000 in the first year and have better services. The Long Meadow is actually joining us, just to split hairs. Amy would be the director under this plan, and their employees would become our employees, would be a full-time nurse, which we don't have now. They would get inspection services that they don't have now, but it would be through our inspectors. I didn't bring the whole file, I didn't bring any of the files.
Yeah, like I said, I was just confirming that, before anything happens, that we'll be getting a full breakdown and everything.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing else? Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. 6A, the November 26, 2019 executive session minutes. You should have those in your packet. If there are no changes, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
I move to accept the executive session minutes of the November 26, 2019 Town Council meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay, as well, the December 10, 2019 open session minutes, also in your packet. If there are no changes, I'll entertain a motion to accept the December 10, 2019.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the open session minutes of the December 10, 2019 Town Council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Another great job, Jeff.
Excellent.
Excellent. And it's a marathon meeting in the first few weeks.
Seriously.
Okay, item seven, communication correspondence and announcements. We have two items of correspondence. The first one is an email proposing an ordinance against feeding predatory animals by one of our citizens, I believe. Sarah, you're in the, yes, in the audience, since you're here, do you want to come to the table and comment, address?
Basically, I'm Sarah Marvel, and I live on Peas Road. And when we moved there, we started finding oddly enough, large amounts of raw chicken in our yard, and coyotes out our front door. And I have two dogs, and I have two elderly, somewhat disabled horses, and so I was concerned. And then I saw my neighbor doing it, and I mentioned to her, like, it's not really a safe thing to do, and she said, yeah, my daughter told me that. And I said, okay, and I thought that would be the end of it. That was a year and a half ago. I've reached out to her one other time, I've also contacted the town, and I have to say that the town's been great, really responsive, but your hands are tied. Unless she, and I reached out to the State Wildlife, and again, they were great, really responsive, but their question was, is she baiting them? I said, no, I don't think she would hurt an animal for any reason, she just is feeding them large amounts, and they're leaving chicken and coming through my property, so that they are literally right outside my door and catching, you know, large amounts of chicken and pork chops in my yard. But there's nothing anybody can do because she's not baiting them for hunting. So it seemed like a silly request, I have to say, I'm a little embarrassed, but unless there's something that the Animal Control Officer or somebody can say, like, you have to stop doing this, it's against town ordinance, I kind of feel like my hands are tied, and so is everyone else's, so that's all I have.
I've had some discussions with Counselor O'Connor, who unfortunately is not able to be here this evening, because he was, until he took office, the town's Animal Control Officer for quite a few years. His take on it is exactly what you said, the town is not able to take any action. The view from the state, at the state level, is that the wildlife in the Commonwealth belongs to the Commonwealth and not to any town or municipality. Domestic animals within the municipality belong via the owner to the purview of the Animal Control Officer. So this is difficult to regulate.
But we're not regulating the wild animals, we're regulating a creation process.
You're suggesting that we regulate a citizen's behavior, in other words, toward that.
The feeding of the wild animals.
A feeding, basically.
The putting out food through the chest.
Certainly.
My only concern about creating an ordinance like that, how do you enforce it? How do you enforce saying to someone, you can't put the chicken outside? It's difficult, because unless we have a town employee watching her put the chicken outside for reasons to bait a coyote or bring a coyote in or to feed it, I don't see how we can enforce an ordinance like that.
But isn't that true, there are rules against trespass, and yet we don't have a dedicated town employee watching for trespass? I mean, it's one of those, you know, you're not going to be able to enforce it except for the most egregious. And I guess my hope is at least being able to say, the town has taken a position that this is not appropriate behavior, because there is a real, if you've talked to Mr. O'Connor, there is a real danger when you start habituating wild animals to coming into close proximity to humans and thinking of them as like food or food providers. That's a real issue with habituation, and it's creating a public danger. If not, I mean, I'm outside at the wee hours of the morning feeding my horses by myself. My horses are 24 and 25 years old, one's only got one eye, the other's got cushions, so they're not really able to protect themselves as well as they might. These coyotes are good sized, I don't know if you've seen some of the photos, but they are good size, and they are strong and healthy, and they're well-fed. So if you can't do anything, I do understand that, but I figured this was my last option.
I reached out to Sarah in response to her email, and I shared with her that we probably share the same animals, because I'm at one end of probably the wooded area, and you're at the other end, as I see it. I live in an environment where bird feeders have been, you know, problematic. We have bears, we have coyotes, raccoons, deer, you name it, we've got it all, turkeys. And I enjoy seeing them, however, from a safe distance, and I appreciate what you've been dealing with. I have a concern about anything escalating between you and your neighbor, and I say that very respectfully, because based on the communication that we received from you, that there was a time when you felt somewhat threatened and you left the property, you were trying to appeal to a voice of reason, you know, this is what I'm dealing with. So I, you know, I understand why you've come to us. I know that you have spoken to the Animal Inspector, you've also spoken to the Animal Control Officer, and from what you've told me, they've been very helpful. However, it's a very difficult issue to enforce. I'd like to see if we can, some kind of public service announcement in our reminder, you know, this issue's come before the council. I don't know if LCAD is rolling, are we on camera?
They are.
Okay, so folks will be watching this. You know, I understand the fascination of seeing wild animals, but I also am concerned about the safety of pets and even small children. I would hate to have to be dealing with this again after something occurred. So I'd like to at least maybe trigger some sort of public attention to this, and perhaps maybe somehow, some way, your situation will resolve itself, because there is now the recognition that perhaps what I'm doing is not in the best interest of the town, my neighborhood, and the animals. Because what if this person leaves the area, and now these animals are accustomed to coming to this area for food? Now they have to readjust, you know, to their lifestyle, so to speak. So those are my thoughts, but I'm, you know, sorry that you're having to deal with all of this.
I'm thinking that, and I'm going to defer to Counselor Kane here, who has a law enforcement background, to ask, is there something on the civil side relative to law enforcement that can be done?
It would flow to the civil side, because at this point in time, if the police were to be involved, it would be, it would have to be criminal, and it would be viewed at this point in time that there is no crime committed. The only stretch I can see a little bit, listening to you, was you said that you found chicken on your property.
Oh, yeah, she's brought plates of chicken, my husband picked up six pounds of chicken on a plastic plate.
When I hear that, I hear trespassing. So they could be trespassed from your property, so that the chicken isn't put on your property. I wasn't sure if they were placing the chicken on your property.
The animals were the animals.
Or the animals were relocating that for further supply.
I think both is happening, because we found, in fact, just yesterday, or on the weekend when it was nice, you know, three plastic plates, my husband has found plastic plates with literally six pounds of chicken on it, raw chicken. And in the summer, it gets pretty nasty, so.
So I would look at the trespassing aspect, and then you mentioned the word civil, you could talk to an attorney, because that.
I'm trying not to. I was really trying to just say, be able to, because she's reasonable, other parties have, on her property have been less reasonable. So I was just hoping to be able to, and I know her daughter has told her the same thing I've told her, I was hoping that maybe if there was an ordinance, I could say, you know, geez, look at this, this is really something that you've got to stop doing, that that would be enough, but I understand.
Mr. Hen?
I agree that an ordinance would be very difficult to put together and almost impossible to regulate, I mean, ultimately. And like you say, people will obey the law because they want to obey the law, not because somebody's watching over them. I would like to make a motion that the Town Council write a friendly letter requesting that the person cease and desist, in a nice sort of way, explaining what Marilyn says about perhaps what Counselor Richard says about enjoying the view of animals and seeing them there, signed by the seven-town council, as just a friendly request. And that would be another step in between litigation, civil litigation, or going to the.
Yeah, I'm not going to litigate against my neighbor, I don't think that's good.
So I make a motion that we draft a letter in that vein.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? In that vein, I would rather see us put an article into the reminder, so that the whole town can see. We know from Sarah that it's happening there, but it may be happening other locations, and I would rather see us put something in that talks about, hey, feeding wild animals is not a good thing. I do believe Fishing Game has a whole article that was done up for it. I would rather see something like that put in, instead of trying to deal with just one person in town or one family. Just a thought.
I would agree that that would be definitely the first course of action, and if we wanted to follow through with it, with a Town Council letter, if we felt it needed further action, we could revisit that. But I also wanted to comment that if your neighbor's feeding the animals to try to protect them, they're actually harming the animal further, because you're training that animal to eat human food and come onto property where they could be unwanted. And if those animals were to come onto your property, and you felt threatened at all, then you might harm them, you know, you could shoot the animal, actually. So you're deviating around their purpose to try to protect these animals and actually creating a more unsafe environment for them, even as such as crossing a road, being hit by traffic, or attacking other pets in the yard, or a young child.
There's a motion on the floor, though, and I would like to address the motion again, and that is that I respect Counselor Ralph's position, but I believe. again, and that is that I respect Counselor Ralph's position, but I believe, I believe that she already knows that this is not a good idea. Reading in the paper isn't really going to reach her, and that's what we're really trying to do. And it might reach her if a, if a friendly letter's people saying, please, don't do this, from the town council, is targeting the problem.
She's been, I think the, the animal control officer has spoken with her, and I've provided her with the habituation literature from the state, so I don't, I just, I don't have any sway with her, maybe you folks would. And I'm not sure it's an either-or situation, couldn't there be both a letter and some more general?
Let's move, let's move the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. It speaks only to the letter to the resident. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Do we want a motion to also do the public?
Public, some sort of public service.
Public service announcement.
I, I make a motion that we provide some information for the reminder, addressing this issue, not just P's Road, but certainly throughout the community.
And our health department director can help get that in.
Perfect. And I have the article from Fish and Wildlife that gives some very specific information in it.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, so we'll take those steps and hope for some favorable awareness on that your neighbor's part, and, and hope for the best for you. Thank you. Okay, we also.
I can drop that for you.
Happy to let you do it. We also under communication have, have a letter from resident Jennifer Fonseca, supporting the funding for a new high school. Ms. Fonseca is a college senior, my memory serves, and an alum from Eastland Meadow High School, and certainly supports the process of, with the school department and the support of the council going through the MSBA eligibility process, and she's simply advocating that the council take that seriously and, and do all in their control to work with the school department to get a favorable nod from the Mass School Building Authority. Okay, moving to public hearings. A proposed bylaw addressing liquor license rules and regulations, this is a first reading. And we. Jeannie's going to make me fly without a cue card. I think I can do it. I'm going to open the public meeting and identify counselors at the table this evening. From your left, counselors Richards, Page, Hill, Kane, and Henry. And now I'll ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record, please.
The Eastland Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on January 14, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at 328 North Main Street, for a proposed bylaw addressing liquor license rules and regulations. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public in the town clerk's office and on the town's website, www.eastlandmeadowma.gov. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you. Now, the petitioner is the town, or the council, because this proposed bylaw emanates from our subcommittee. Just as a clarification, Jeannie, I have to read verbatim the, all the two pages. Okay, then. I know it. A proposed bylaw for the town of Eastland Meadow, liquor license rules and regulations, all establishments serving liquor shall abide by all requirements of Massachusetts general law and regulations of the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission. In addition, the local licensing authority, LLA, which is the council, requires the following: Last call for service of alcoholic beverages or drinks shall be 30 minutes before closing. Police shall be contacted promptly in the event of any altercation that becomes physical. Violations and offenses, the LLA may, after deliberation and hearing, impose penalties for violations of all applicable regulations and laws, including but not limited to the following: Sales to minors under the age of 21, permitting persons under the age of 21 to consume, furnishing or causing to be furnished alcoholic beverages to persons under the age of 21. No manager or substitute manager of record on the licensed premises. Failure to call police for a physical disturbance on the licensed premises. Sale of alcoholic beverages to intoxicated persons. Failure to comply with last-call requirements. Sale and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages after closing time by the public, by employees of the licensee, or friend of the licensee's employees. Alcohol service in impermissible areas on the licensee's premises. Employees of the licensee accepting alcoholic drinks while on duty. Substitution of brands of alcoholic beverages. Licensee or employees of the licensee not permitting inspection of the premise by the ELL licensing authority or their agents. Sale and/or possession of alcoholic beverages not permitted by license. Keg registration violations. Misrepresenting material facts on the initial application for a license or on a renewal application. Licensees, managers, or employees present on their licensed premises while in an intoxicated condition. And licensee, manager, or employees knowingly permitting the use of licensed premises for the purpose of promoting any illegal activity. Hearings. Under written notification to the LLA from the police chief or other source that an illegality has allegedly occurred on a licensed premises, the LLA will consider whether or not a violation hearing should be held. If it is determined a violation hearing should be held, the LLA shall send written notice by the United States Postal Service to the licensee setting forth the alleged violations and a hearing date. Penalties. For a first offense, the LLA shall issue a five-day liquor license suspension. For a second offense occurring within a 24-month period, the LLA shall issue a 10-day liquor license suspension. For a third or subsequent offense within a 36-month period, the LLA may authorize revocation of the liquor license. The LLA may determine on a case-by-case basis whether any such said suspension or revocation should be held in abeyance or served. The LLA may use its discretion in determining whether the facts surrounding a violation warrant a letter of warning to be added to the licensee's file, a suspension to be served, or a suspension to be held by inabeyance. For purposes of the determination of the suspension and/or abeyance period, the period shall commence upon the LLA's finding, after hearing that a violation occurred. If a subsequent violation occurs during the suspension and/or abeyance period, licensee shall serve any period remaining in abeyance on the violation previously adjudicated, and will face an additional penalty for the new violation occurring during the abeyance period. The LLA shall have the authority to disregard the foregoing suspension period and issue a more severe penalty, including but not limited to revocation of a license for a first offense upon determination after hearing on a particular violation that a licensee constitutes a threat to public safety and safety based upon said violations. So that said, now this is the public's opportunity to speak regarding this proposed bylaw, so if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to do so, would you please come forward?
We do have some changes to that bylaw, which probably should be reflected before the public comments.
There's a change?
So our, our town council has made suggestions, our town council has made, our lawyer has made, attorney has made suggestions.
Okay. Are you talking about the colored sheep? Here, pass this to Kathy.
And it's appropriate that we read what was in there.
Right. And so now there are some.
So I, I can address this.
You can.
If you'd like, thank you.
What, for, all right, yes, before the public way.
Absolutely, yeah, because we want, we want to be weighing on the, this bylaw was proposed by the Liquor License Commission in a meeting back in the fall of 2019. We noted our bylaws did not address specifically violations of liquor laws by establishments. The License Commission looked at other town council bylaws, and crafted the proposed bylaw tailored to Eastland Meadow. In addition to the, in accordance with the town charter, the proposed bylaw was sent to the bylaw review committee for its approval, the bylaw committee reviewed it, it was posted in full in a reminder, and is now being presented at this public hearing. Almost all these requirements mirror the state laws and Alcohol Beverages Control Commission requirements, and are well-known by establishments serving liquor already. Since that happened, we received suggested modifications and edits from our town attorney today. And the question from our town attorney, the way, the question from our town attorney was, what does the bylaw committee think? Would they like to take this under advisement and meet again, or would we like to look at the changes that were made? I am the bylaw committee, subcommittee chair, and I, as I see it, our, a town attorney has made three types of changes from the bylaws as drafted, and I don't think the bylaw committee would object to any of them. The language rewrites, to me, is just a change from the informal language that was easier for business owners and residents to understand, the language is easier for lawyers to understand. It says about the same thing, nothing substantively different, in my opinion, from what the hearing, what the hearing noticed that, that the town council president just read. The formatting, it's been reformatted into As and Bs and Cs, which is something that the bylaw committee was not concerned about, because General Code is changing all the formatting anyway, in the bylaw update project. For persons who are unaware, the bylaw update project is an ongoing project to update all of our general bylaws using an outside vendor, and they'll have completely different formatting. The reference to the section of the bylaws where the new bylaws would be inserted, that town attorney has recommended, would be, are different from the bylaw committee's recommendations. But since they too will be changed by General Code, it's just a matter of where we will find them in the bylaws. They will be there, they will, they, and, and we will not object to their placement where our town attorney is suggesting. From my perspective, if we can move ahead tonight, I think we'd be fine with that. But I would leave up to council president and town attorney as to whether that's appropriate under the circumstances.
I'm fine with it, based on what you've just indicated. Now I'm going to defer to Mr. Maynard and.
Well, certainly I would, I would second Counselor Henry's comment that the changes are non-substantive. Certainly wasn't my intention to make them more formal or more legalese, right? I was trying to make the language more consistent with the language used in the current bylaws, or the type of language used in the current bylaws, so that they would fit more of a piece in those existing bylaws. But again, there's no intent to change any of the substance of the proposal of the bylaw committee, and I think it's appropriate to move forward towards a second reading, as amended, those changes are acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
So through the chair?
Yes.
After looking over both of them, under C hearings, I see two lines that were actually added. A licensee may be represented by an attorney or other trial person, but need not be. And hearings may be conducted informally without the application of the rules of evidence or the need for testimony under oath. Other than that, I didn't see any major changes. Those two I would agree with, it makes sense. I just wanted to point it out that those are two that jumped out at me.
You're correct, those are two additions, simply to spell out how a hearing is to be conducted.
And through the chair, my observation there is that since these are both actually don't, they don't tighten the regulations in any way, they actually loosen the regulations, no establishment should object to these two changes, and that's why I call them non-substantive.
So this is the first reading of this, is this correct?
Correct.
So as a first reading, I hate to do this to you, but should we read it in this form, if this is what we're going to accept?
I move that we do not read it in as much as it is substantively the same in terms of.
I tried.
There is a second. All those in favor of leaving it alone? Sorry, Jack, put the right important words on.
I can't wait to read the minutes.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, so now with that clarification, I want to go back to offering the public an opportunity to speak on behalf of this. It should also be noted that these proposed bylaw, the proposed bylaw, was mailed to all the appropriate licensees, so that they have had a, a specific sense of, and could come to the meeting if they wished to weigh in on that. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Okay, hearing none, and seeing none, I will close the public portion of the hearing, and now defer to the councils for comment, or?
Does the public portion not stay open until the second reading? I believe it stays, stays open to the second and.
Because we're continuing.
Okay, so the public portion stays open, because it will be continued?
Through the chair?
Yes.
We do have copies of the revision on the chair over there, for anyone who is interested in seeing the, the non-substantive changes, as I say, but there are many of them.
So we have a, a motion here now?
I move to continue the public hearing for the proposed bylaw addressing the liquor license rules and regulations to January 28, 2020, at 7:00 PM for a second reading.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so this will be continued until January 28. We also have a proposed bylaw to establish a charter review committee for Article 9, Section 2 of the Charter, and this evening is a second reading. So I'm going to read this one now with the changes, so. This public hearing is now open, counselors from left to right, Richards, Page, Hill, Kane, and Henry. I'll ask the clerk to read the notice into the record.
The Eastland Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on December 10, 2019, at 6:45 PM, in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at 328 North Main Street, to address a proposed bylaw to establish a charter review committee for Article 9, Section 2 of the Eastland Meadow Town Rule Charter. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public in the town clerk's office and on the town's website, www.eastlandmeadowma.gov. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Okay. This proposed bylaw establishing a charter review committee, 10.090, a special charter review committee, a special charter review committee as mandated in. review committee, a special charter review committee as mandated in Article IX, Section Two of the Town Charter shall be periodically established as provided below. The town councils shall establish the committee in each year ending in zero and no later than July 1 of that year. The committee must submit a written report to the town council honor before March 15 of the following year. The committee's charge is as described in Article IX, Section Two of the Charter. The committee shall be comprised of seven registered voters of the town with the following restrictions. No more than two members can be current town councilors, no more than two members can be former charter commission members, no more than two members can be employees of the town, at least two members shall be persons who are not current town councilors or town employees nor former charter commission members. The town council president will appoint committee members under the authority described in Article Two, Section Three of the Charter. Each appointment shall expire at the end of the calendar year in which the committee's report is submitted. What I just read is inclusive of the recommendations by our town attorney. So, that said, is there anyone in the audience who cares to comment on this proposed charter review committee? Mr. O'Shea.
Senator O'Shea, can you take your time again? Just with the breakdown of, you know, no more than two, whatever is the composition of the committee, it would just be my recommendation that, that council wouldn't, like, opt to have, you know, a particular member decide which hat they want to wear. If they fall into both town employee and something else, I would think they should count in both buckets, not just one or the other, in order to afford most people in the community an opportunity to serve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, then, since this is a second reading, I'll close the public portion, and now is an opportunity for the council to offer observations or statements.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The only, I notice that a change was made to the establishment. We had the town council not less than one year from, the date the committee is established shall submit the report, which mirrors what the charter says, but that's been changed to honor before March 15 of the following year, which, if the committee is established July 1, that doesn't give them the full year that the charter says that they have.
You raise a good point.
That was not a change that I made, that was in the original proposal from the bylaw committee. Correct.
I think what we had said was the first year because of timing, that it would be honored before March 15, but then subsequent to that, it would be on a one-year basis, if I remember correctly, maybe I don't.
You do remember correctly, the purpose for this change was that we had to get it onto the town ballot.
Oh, that's right, and we have a timeline there.
We have a timeline there. We will always have that timeline in the future. We may rather change the charter requirement, or we can appoint the committee earlier. But we felt that since this was going to be for this year, and it wouldn't be another 10 years before we do, we change the bylaws at that time.
And actually, now that you say that, the first line says the committee must be established no later than July 1, so if it's established earlier, then it would give the one year.
We try.
Okay. I'm just trying to remember everything we said.
But for the purpose of getting the proposed changes onto the ballot, first it must go to the, through a town council, and then to the attorney general's office, and then there needs to be, where's the language, about 45 days between...
Well, there has to be a lot of printing of the ballot.
Yes, the printing of the ballot. And our annual election is always the first Tuesday in June, so the, whatever comes out, whatever product comes from this soon-to-be-appointed or advertised and then appointed committee, the committee will complete its work no later than next March 15, so that it would pass muster all through those phases, and then be on the June 2021 town election ballot.
Madam Chair, if I may make two other points or comments. One, I did address the comment made by a member of the public with respect to which hats are being worn by striking the word additional in the criteria for, for membership, so that people can't wear more than one, than one hat, as it has now been read. Secondly, I apologize for the lateness of my edits and suggested edits, but in fact, I didn't see these bylaws until Friday, so I would, I would urge council and clerk, whatever the process is, in the future with respect to bylaws and whether I'm the town attorney or someone else is, that you run these by town attorney before a first reading.
Okay, fair enough. That makes sense, a lot of sense. Okay, do we have any other comments from the council, then we can entertain that motion?
I move to accept the proposed bylaw to establish a charter review committee per Article IX, Section Two of the Charter.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously, okay. All right, we are now to orders of the day, licensing matters, a one-day liquor license for St. Michael's Parish for February 8, 2020, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. for a sweetheart dinner fellowship. You have that application in your packet. Are the petitioners here? Yes. You can see that all of the conditions of the license request are, have been met. St. Michael's is awesome, come before for application and are very compliant, so I will entertain a motion to approve this one-day liquor license unless there are other comments or concerns.
Okay, so, so I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for St. Michael's Parish for February 8, 2020, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for a sweetheart dinner fellowship.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded.
And third.
Approve the one-day liquor license for St. Michael's for February 8. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. You're very welcome, and thank you for your patience.
Sounds like a great event.
Sounds like a wonderful event.
Do a nice job. Yes, you see that, come join us, that's right.
Sorry he has to wait.
Our down to financial matters, and we have none on our agenda for this evening. Old business, we have already dealt with the presentation from the Jewish Family Service, so now we are to the update of the town council bylaw review committee. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I did send a brief email around discussing what we would be discussing tonight. Unfortunately, I was not able to get the final around to you until just now, so you all should have in your packet a bylaw, a two-page bylaw subcommittee update to town council, right towards the end, which is in more detail what I would like to present tonight.
I got it, yeah.
There it is, Kathy's got it. And this, this background is for the public, through the chair. The project to update our general bylaws began right after the initial bylaw update committee submitted the changes to replace selectmen with town councils and similar changes. That subcommittee developed a list of issues that fell outside their limited mandate. Town department heads were also tasked to review the general bylaws for their suggestions for updating. Those suggestions were captured in a multicolored Google Doc. While the law, while the bylaw subcommittee was considering the task this would be, the former town clerk discovered the existence of a firm that had been helping Massachusetts towns for years to update their bylaws. Last year, the council voted to proceed with General Code's assistance, where midway through that project, reviewing 250 pages with some 300 questions and clarifications from General Code, which are due to them on January 31, and which will allow them to prepare first draft for our review later in the spring. This project has proven to be much more complex than we had originally anticipated. Some of the challenges we're facing are, our initial challenge was to, our initial charge was to update the general bylaws, but when the town clerk contracted with General Code, it was to include all the bylaws, including the zoning bylaws, and the project combined the zoning bylaws and the new code document, which greatly increases the task. Many updates are basically of language, clarifications, typos, reorganizations, which neither our committee nor the General Code feel rise to the level of needing to be presented to you or to an eventual public hearing on an individual basis. But many department heads updated their bylaws with more significant changes, such as increases to fees and penalties, removal of specific fee amounts in favor of generic term fines, establishment of new departments not previously listed in the bylaws, like IT, health, finance, dispatch, cutting the rec commission members back from nine to five. These must be identified, each listed with references to where they are in both bylaws, the old bylaws and the General Code-formatted bylaw, in enough detail to allow this council to give approval to these changes, and enough detail to present to the eventual public hearing. This is a significant undertaking. We've received different changes to the same bylaw by multiple department heads, which we're sorting, sorting out also with suggestions, and also suggestions from General Code. We have to go back to some department heads for their approval of our selection as to which wording to choose. There are scores of these issues, and we're in the middle of doing that. A few bylaw changes appear to have been approved by the selectmen or council over the years, but not presented to the voters. A few others were approved and voted, but never actually got added to the bylaw document. Some of them were found, and some of them haven't been. Some of these are significant enough that we feel they cannot be considered clarifications, reorganizations, or edits. For example, there are several parking violation fines that have been approved, and they're listed on the citation slips, but the bylaw document was never changed to reflect a higher fine. These also need to be captured and presented to the council and the public as part of the project. The council previously approved the concept of creating a single table to list all fees, fines, and penalties that are listed in the bylaws, the ease of residents finding them. Our subcommittee feels this is a good idea and concept, it is difficult to execute. For example, each fee in the table would need a reference back to its bylaw, so it could be, so the bylaw could be found. Also, some bylaws currently list fines not to exceed, which is usually taken from mass general laws, while the actual fee being currently charged is less. I suppose it is listed not to exceed in the general bylaw in the actual current fine in the table, but it's, it's an open question. Even though General Code will provide us legal wording that will permit the mass update to the code, our charter still mandates individual filing bylaw changes. At some point, we will need to suspend that charter provision. Since charter changes must be approved by the voters, we should arrange to get this change onto the June ballot, which will need to be done by the end of March, again. Otherwise, it'll be another year.
Yeah.
Our deadline for this phase of the project, our deadline for the last phase of the project, no, for this phase, was December 15 of last year. We've already gotten an extension to the end of January. Any further delay could involve additional charges. We're not confident of our ability to provide a quality product on January 31, but we are doing our very level best. Finally, at least for today, the issue of how to present the significant changes our subcommittee identifies. Our proposal is to present these to you in an executive summary describing each briefly enough, in briefly enough detail for your approval or disapproval at the next town council meeting. That will allow us to include this material in our January 31 submission to General Code. We're not looking for decisions or votes at this meeting, but with council's permission, I'd like to review them quickly with you, one at a time, to get a sense of the council on four of these issues. Our subcommittee would discuss these topics again in the next two weeks, bring them back to you with firm recommendations for voter votes at our January 28 council meeting. That will give us three days to complete our submission to General Code. I would also point out that it would be possible for us to make the changes that we feel the council will likely approve, and put them in the document without they're actually being approved yet, because it's only a draft, and they can also be changed. So there is a little bit of wiggle room, but we're trying to do as much as we can. So what we're looking for is a sense of the council on our bylaw subcommittee recheck with department heads. We hate to take department head's suggestions, even if they're, even if they don't agree, even if they're inconsistent, and just choose one without going back to the department heads and explaining, because it's just courtesy. Or a subcommittee can make our own decision and, you know, try to explain in a general way that we had to do this during time. Any feeling for that? Not, not that we're going to ask for a vote, but...
I was just asking, how much would it slow the process down by going back to the department heads and having a brief conversation with them?
We're, we're doing it as, as we are. There's, there's a good 50 of them. And so we're trying. And so I hear that that's an important thing. That's what I hear.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'm also on the committee. A lot of these, like I said, maybe two different department heads made suggestions, some of them are pretty straightforward. For one reason or another, you have to choose this. There's a couple that, it's like, well, do we do it or don't we do it? I think those are the ones that we're asking about flagging.
Yep.
Do you want us to go back to the department head and explain it, or do you want us to put it into the document, flag it as maybe something that's important for the council to look at?
Well, that would be definitely, would definitely...
So the council's going to look at it no matter what?
Yep.
Like I said, we're just looking for...
I hear the sense they want us to try to go back...
Do we constantly go back to the department head and say, here was a change, what do you think? Do you like it? Don't you like it? Or do we flag all of those, bring them to the council, and say these were the changes? We'll give you five minutes to think.
Should we create the table of fees? Remember, the bylaw committee recommended this.
Yes.
The town council approved, approved it in concept, it's proving to be a large task. However, we think we may be able to get General Code to help us with it. Should we create the table of fees, or just leave fees in the bylaws and...
Personally, I would like to see a table of fees, because as down the road, if need be that certain fees have to be adjusted up or down, if they stay embedded in the bylaw, then you have to go through the bylaw change.
Either way, you still have to go through a bylaw change.
Okay.
They're, they're in the table, because the table's part of a bylaw, so either way, it'll be a bylaw change.
We may be able to change the charter through the Charter Review Commission to loosen that a little bit, but at this point, there's no, there's no savings.
Okay.
Except for the residents, they get funded.
It's easy to use.
Approval, yeah, approval to suspend the charter provision regarding updating the bylaws on the June ballot. That is definitely going to come to you for a vote, because if we don't do that, we could stand to be delayed for a year, unless we can go to the state and get some kind of exemption. Approval to present significant changes in executive summary form at the January 28 council meeting. Again, this would be a bullet, here's the issue, here's the bylaw, here's our recommendation, and we'd have to, we'd have to just sort through those quickly.
I don't know that, I don't know that we have an option other than the option I suggested, that we go ahead and make the changes as we see fit and deliver them to you at a later time.
Well, that's the task of the bylaw, of any subcommittee, do the legwork and bring us your best product.
Our problem, our problem is the deadline.
Right, as best you can.
Through the chair, the question is, which chair are we talking about?
There's only one chair here. There's only one chair here.
Yeah, but anyway, with respect to the substantive change, and it would depend on what particular bylaw we're talking about, but if the intent was modified with the substantive change, the intent of the original bylaw versus the proposed, I struggle with that not being vetted through the normal process of having a public hearing and changing...
There will be a public hearing.
Specifically, one-on-one, not just for the whole I'm talking about. How do you, how do you, it all depends on the numbers that we're talking about in terms of...
We have received information from General Code that many other towns, and they've sent us examples, will put together legal language which will have to go through our town attorney, that allows us to make all changes in one very large change, as long as they are separately identified...
And cited.
And cited, brought to, brought to the public meeting, approval, first of all, approved by council, brought to the public meeting for public input.
Case in point, these, and I'm just pulling one out of the air, because I know there are several, the concerns about our signed bylaw, which you probably haven't looked at yet, because you haven't gotten to zoning, but the signed bylaw is rather substantive in of itself, depending on what district the signs are located, and there was some question about constitutional language, and it deserves a looksee, but that's not something that can be done in 10 minutes with the bylaw committee. And my thoughts on that were to, and I'm not on the committee, folks, I was just doing some review myself, but it, my feeling is that that's, that's an issue that has to be really taken up with the board that governs our zoning bylaws, and that would be the planning board and the building inspector with respect to that particular piece, which, you know, time won't allow that to take place in this process.
It actually does, this is the kind of thing we're doing every day, is we are taking a bylaw as we come to it, and fleshing it out, and checking legal, checking MGL, and finding this not really there, like they say, and checking with the various boards. The problem is, it's a time-consuming job.
This is a great example, though, through the chair, the signs, I believe the legal analysis was this may be unconstitutional after a Supreme Court ruling. That's above our committee. I mean, I'm going to be careful.
Oh, come on, Ralph, you can do it.
That's way above us, to where if we put it into the bylaw as written, the way that we have it, we can change that down the road, and that would be one that we would look to change further down the road, by itself, independently, that it would not be, in my opinion, changed within this document. I mean, I love the law, I am not going to go to that degree of it personally.
But that was just one example, and there are more. But I, you know, I'm just...
Through the chair, I agree with Councilor Richards, there are many, and we've already done a lot of research, going to, going back to mass general laws, going back to other departments, and to, for clarification of these things, and that's what we're continuing to do. We just haven't got to the zoning chapter yet. It's coming up this week.
My phone's off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is an arduous task. Let's be certain.
Okay, we have new business, summary, any action items for next meeting? What Mr. Henry just spoke about, try to have a position, and some thoughts ready for that. Just as an aside, one of the things that we will be dealing with on the 28th agenda are council goals. Admittedly, that should have been taken place at the front end of a fiscal year, but our work over the summer was more urgent in securing another town manager, and so we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but we will attempt to create some goals and get them in place. They'll prob, they will, more than likely, be in concert with some of the work we're doing right now, such as the bylaws and the budget, but nonetheless, we'll have some time for council goals, so please be thinking of that and be ready with some thoughts. I think that will be about it for homework, if you will. And so now we are down to executive session, and we have two separate executive sessions this evening. So I will entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose to discuss potential litigation regarding Spark Energy, and to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding PLH LCC, and then to re-enter open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Councilor Richards?
Yes.
Yes.
Page, chair votes, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. We will take a three-minute quick break, if you will, and we will move into our first executive session regarding Spark Energy.
Okay, thank you.
Three-minute break.